Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty, one P M. I'd like to call our regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Kermit to order. Tonight is January twenty-third, and we are located in the council chambers here at Kermit City Hall. If you don't mind, we'll stand to our pledge of allegiance and Councilman Hayes will lead us in our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we ask that you be with each and every one of us here tonight. That decisions made will be for the benefit of our community, our citizens, and our city. We ask that you have your hand of healing upon the shoulders of all of the Schuler family and wink that have experienced the tragedy this week that they have experienced. We also ask that you be with our new leaders in Washington as they set forth to lead, direct, and run our country. We ask all of these things in your most honorable and precious name. Amen.
Thank you. At this moment, I'd like to go ahead and read a memorial proclamation for Patrolman Alvin Minor Rogers. We have a representative of the family here, but I'm gonna read the proclamation and then I'll present it to Chief Ramos to present to the family. So memorial proclamation honoring Patrolman Alvin Minor Rogers. Whereas Patrolman Alvin Minor Rogers honorably served the Kermit Police Department for three years, demonstrating unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of our community. And whereas before joining the Kermit Police Department, Patrolman Rogers served with distinction as a United States Marine, earning recognition for his bravery, discipline, and commitment to protecting the nation. And whereas on December twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-two, at the age of thirty-seven, Patrolman Rogers tragically lost his life in the line of duty when his patrol car collided with a train on Highway three oh two during a period of heavy fog, resulting in his ultimate sacrifice. And whereas Patrolman Rogers was a devoted family man, survived by his loving wife, son, and three daughters whose lives were forever changed by his untimely passing. And whereas the city of Kermit and the state of Texas owe a profound debt of gratitude to Patrolman Rogers for his selfless service and the sacrifice he made to protect his fellow citizens. And whereas it is fitting and proper to honor the memory of Patrolman Rogers and to recognize the enduring impact of his service on our community. Now therefore, let it be resolved that we commemorate the life and legacy of Patrolman Alvin Minor Rogers and express our deepest condolences to his family and acknowledge the heroism he displayed in the line of duty. And witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the seal of the city of Kermit to be affixed on this eleventh day of January twenty twenty-five. So Mr. Hildebrand, will you come up and Chief? Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Also tonight, we have special recognition for a one of our city Kermit employees is Miguel here? Come on up front, Miguel. Mike, you wanna join him up front? So y'all, tonight, we're recognizing Miguel Calderon for special recognition for his heroic assistance to a citizen in need. Whereas the city of Kermit is committed to fostering a spirit of community, kindness, and service among its residents. And whereas on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Miguel Calderon demonstrated extraordinary compassion and swift action upon discovering a citizen who had fallen in front of City Hall. And whereas without hesitation, Miguel Calderon rendered immediate aid, ensuring the individual received the necessary assistance and comfort in a time of distress. And whereas his selfless actions reflect the highest values of civic duty, compassion, and responsibility, setting an inspiring example for all members of our community. And whereas the city of Kermit wishes to express its deepest gratitude and appreciation for Miguel and his outstanding service and commitment to the well-being of his fellow citizens. Now therefore, I, David Holbrook, Mayor of the city of Kermit, do hereby recognize and commend Miguel Calderon for his heroic assistance and exemplary citizenship and urge all residents to celebrate and acknowledge his kindness and dedication to our community. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Kermit to be affixed on this twenty-third day of January twenty twenty-five.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One other quick note on that was Miguel's actions. When the dust kinda settled and everything was taken care of, they looked around and he had already gone back to work. He wasn't here looking for any pat on the back or anything. He went on back to his duties. So thank you again. We appreciate you. All right, moving on to our public comment section is Ms. Lenore Maron in the audience yet? Ms. Maron, would you like to speak now or when we address everything in the agenda item or at both times? You're welcome to do it.
I prefer to wait until the item is called. That way I kinda know where else to stand.
Absolutely. We're glad to call you right back up again when we get ready. You're very welcome. So we're not quite ready to go into executive session, so we're gonna move through the agenda and then when Mike lets me know, we'll move over to the executive session. So first, we're moving to item nine, which is our consent agenda. In your packet, you'll find the minutes from previous meetings, our accounts payable, and the investment report. I'll give council a moment to look over that before I take a motion to accept that.
Eric, council, I do want to acknowledge that in the minutes, you'll see a different modified minutes have been submitted to you. It is not as the detail that you've had before. It's pretty much just what the conversation for that particular item was, the vote, and the motion made, second, and then the vote. And this is, of course, will be official minutes for the city, but if anyone is interested in actually hearing the discussion that was held, they can always go to our YouTube channel and they can hear the entire discussion in whole. So that's one thing we do want to point out. The minutes that you have submitted to you, of course, do follow and adhere to the statute requirements for minutes for municipalities.
Mike, I do see we're about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in interest earned on the tax pool prime for the last three months of last year.
Yeah. So you remember, we made some changes to our investment policy. Well, now we're investing eighty-seven percent, thirteen percent standard in the full cash account. But this is one of the two investments that we have, and I'm talking about three. The tax pool prime, we also have some CDs, and we also have some money than US Treasury securities. And this does identify the amount of money that was brought in just on tax pool prime. But let you know that through the course of last year only, we have brought in almost about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand on interest only in tax pool prime. So I think we're on target to bring in about four hundred and sixty, four hundred and sixty-five thousand this year enough.
That's awesome.
It's great. And that's just on tax pool prime. It does not include the Treasury securities or CDs.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Is everybody ready? I make a motion. We approve the items A, B, C.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to new business. First item on the agenda is discussing consider cost of living increase on the contractual amount in municipal court judge, Ms. Cheryl Wright. We have.
Eric, council, there's another agenda summary in there. It's a presentation that was requested by municipal judge Cheryl Wright. Best reason it's on this agenda.
I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention. Since I was a woman, I brought in over a million dollars, and I've only been with since twenty-two, May of twenty-two. The school has now moved truancy over to municipal court, out of county court or out of JP court. So we've taken that on too. And we are also starting an F T A program to, we're starting to suspend people's license when they don't take their tickets. So there's a lot more coming through there. I don't, I'm trying to keep from the backlog of that ticket like we were before. So just taking a little bit more time and effort now.
All righty.
Just to be clear, you did not get the raise that the other employees got because your salary is set by council, right?
Correct.
So I'd like to make a brief comment and then we can move on to that item. And this comment has no bearing at all on the cost of living increase that we're discussing tonight, but it's something that I feel like we need to address. Your honor, I'd like to remind you that there are two appointed positions within the city of Kermit. And according to the charter, those appointments are made by the council. Those two appointments are municipal judge and city manager. All the other ones are employees. Our current city manager was appointed a little over a year ago by this council. His role is to manage the city's affairs as directed by council and is in charge of all city employees. This includes municipal court clerk. There have been occasions where I feel that you've either circumvented this or attempted to circumvent his authority. Also, it continues to be brought to my attention that conversations you have in the public or at your other places of employment about myself, this council, and the city manager that in my opinion need to be private conversations. Instead of assuming that this is correct, I want to give you the opportunity to dispel any of these reports or rumors.
Well, I've talked to him about some stuff, but that has gone on in my department with my clerk. But we've handled it amongst us as far as, I'm not really sure what you're talking about.
I can visit with you a little bit privately on some of it that I heard. It's just, it's some disparaging remarks or whatever. And I just, I really want to take the last two and a half, three years and just put that to bed. I think you do, and council agrees, I know they do, an absolutely outstanding job in your role as judge. But we just, I'm asking, we get a little team player, a little team effort. You're part of our executive group that we rely on, and we really need to, you've gotta put personal to the side, represent the city, and just remember that, cuz you do an outstanding job in that courtroom. Outstanding.
Can I ask that that be group-wide here at the city?
Absolutely.
Because our office does do a good job, but we get talked about all the time, and we don't take it personal because it's Kermit. You're gonna get talked about no matter what you do or whatever. So that needs to be a mutual thing through all departments here.
Absolutely, especially department heads, people in positions of authority. So.
That's exactly right.
Anyway, as a reminder, I want to remind you that you're appointed by this council and to make this matter, I wanted to make this a matter of record tonight, so I wanted to address this and let you have a chance to speak on it and just ask you if we can please refrain from that in the future. And keep up the good work. You do an outstanding job. I'll hear a motion if anybody wants to make it on the cost of living increase for Ms. Cheryl.
What are we looking at?
Yeah, how much is the cost of living?
We'll have to look at what the government rate was. It was, I don't even know what the percentage was. It's whatever.
Currently, American Council currently, municipal court judge obtains twenty-five hundred dollars a month. I believe that's correct. Is that correct? Twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And of course, what had happened before, we had Leanne come in. There was taxes taken out of her check because she was pre as an employee. But as was mentioned, she is a contract employee appointed by the council. So we moved her to a vendor and on a contractual basis, and she just went with the net twenty-five hundred. So I think that what the discussion that was had prior to with the judge and myself was looking at kind of the five percent also that was given to the employees. I would take into consideration, if you so choose, that I don't believe she's received any type of increase in the last probably two or three years at least, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think we.
Twenty-three, she, twenty-three, she got a raise.
Two years.
Yeah, that's why we missed it. That's why we missed the cost of living on the last one.
So it would be, I think that was a question or the conversation that we'd had that she was going to request from this council was a five percent, which is all in line with what the other employees received also at the beginning of the year.
I would like, I would like to kinda comment on what was taking place earlier. I agree. I think you are doing a good job, and I feel that we have come a long ways as far as teamwork. And when Mike was here, he got everybody back on the right track. I would love to hear everybody, all departments, like I said, working together and cut, you know, the criticism, whatever we had in the past, I feel that we need to not go backwards. We need to go forward. So I feel everyone, you know, needs to continue to go forward and let's not look back and continue that same area that we, era that we were in back then in all departments. But I appreciate each and every one of you.
I think you've done a fantastic job cleaning up the backlog because we know you had a real mess on your hands. And that we're moving forward with implementing new programs so that we can all be taken seriously. I think that's a great thing.
Eric, council, I do want to clarify. I just looked on the A P item. She gets twenty-five thousand a year. That's what it is.
Right.
So it's twenty-five thousand, and I misspoke when I said twenty-five hundred a month. It's twenty-five thousand a year. So the monthly is two thousand eighty-three is what it comes out to.
And the raise we gave was about five percent.
I think we had had that discussion, but of course, that's something that the council and the judge would probably have to discuss. Or negotiate because she is a appointed official, as it was mentioned, and so that's something that the council would choose to do with her.
So would we have a, we vote on it now and then meet with her for the amount?
It actually retroactive back to the last, not last pay period, but you're in the middle of a pay period, I think, right now, I think.
Yeah, she gets paid monthly.
So if it's decided, it's council will make sure that it gets retroed back to that start date so that she doesn't miss any of that. And like I said, there wasn't one given last year, so I want to keep that in mind. I think the federal average right now is two point nine, but we're way behind on catching her up, so.
Yeah, we appreciate everything.
I'll make a motion that we give Cheryl, the municipal judge, a six percent raise.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for a cost of living adjustment to the municipal judge for six percent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries?
Thank you.
And Mike, we make sure that they get that implemented into the system. Thank you so much.
We got the finance person sitting here, so I think she.
She might have been privy to that conversation.
And Eric, just so you know, the city.
Is he ready? All right, so apologize. At this time, we're gonna adjourn and go into executive session. We will return. I'd like to remind everyone while you're in here, the audio and video does still run, so if you want to be heard, now's your time to be heard, and we'll come back as quick as we can. It is six fifty-one P M.
I got a way to call.
And they lost him, so hard to factor in. She was the only one. He was talking about how it's early. He was talking about Hal, it's early, because he went to Tucson. And you found out, he found out he was there. Oh, didn't he? Next to me, not too long after he uh said that. He's the uh. Yeah, he's a great person, he's a great person, he does. Yeah, Richard was there when y'all were selected to do honors, so he was and he was in that process. How it just moved over to come from around about that time. But there was a lot, yeah, well, see, last time I did one fifty eight, almost all the way out here. And it's not that uh it's just that the road was not very uh you got some and uh so this time I came on. Wasn't that tremendous amount of traffic coming through the uh. I'm I'm pretty central of uh of the Garfield and uh Oak uh uh West Gulf. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It it was still candy. Yeah. Some stuff doesn't help people, yeah, that recognize. A lot of competition for this, but it's. We, just before I left, we had hired. The contractor to go out and readjust utilities. Last time I talked to Rob, we talked about. Way behind on that work, I wouldn't go under the wheel, and I'm not sure that the contractor or she, I don't understand. My contract was on the west stretch, and then this one, and they were battling over to be used, or the east construction, battling. They talked about as well. Joining up on top of the like, I think it may have teed into the interstate. Uh she comes up with uh those crane, she does the crane. Yep, that crane comes across, yes, but I think they just. Yeah, the crane uh just. Oh, yeah, I think it's the number design. I had to see which mowers jumping on me. We were keeping the project where we were utilities and.
Would you move on?
Yeah, we were way too compromised. He gave you a hard time. Yeah. He was from him and another another councilman. Lost my. Lucher. There was a whole lot of other places. Probably was pretty consistent. Yeah, probably fired. Got him fired. He works with that strategic, he has resources, they do, uh they also recruit. We use them quite good, different positions financially. It's it's not as easy to take care of right now, but it's still in there. Be quite a few of them, got me attached. Yeah, I'll be doing, enjoying it, I've heard it funny uh. Got her to back to her being dropped for the. But I think I think a fair bit of that first year may have gone to the crane. What was that, just the intersection? No, yeah, it's crane. Pretty sure that was crane, he went all the way from Second Street. First from Second Street to the. I think it, I think that's it, because. Yeah. Yeah, it was, it's a pretty busy road. Just thought maybe we were too bad, but lots of old. And so we, you know, we worked a new roadway, I'm careful, so we go, yeah, this is changing, yeah. A bunch of it was just the base AC wire rack. Yeah. Which actually, I mean, we took the section out of the back to clean, it's like we could see in a way. Clean the vehicle, but it's like. Yeah, but the way it's like, yes, so we did. That was the one part, nothing made, the mayor didn't have to do so, but then he did some math. That was the one part, but it's why. You have to be working on it now, there's all the hazardous stuff. And of course the valves that are in here. I had an R T, I'm not the issue, sorry. But it took me a while to reach out. We were concentrating so hard. That was still finished. But now the work, the work's worth it, probably. The challenges of these things, stuff are all mixed up all the time. I've never been, I've always wanted to be involved in the industry. But I enjoy it, I'm interested in the community. But I work at those, you know, most of my time has been on this, um with the county, just. Distant stuff, and so. A little bit of similarity, I try to help them, just like y'all did for those, oh master planning, and that was like. And they have, yeah, at first we were their ads. When I got there, I don't know, there was already a lot of pressure before we hired a manager. Understandable. The first meeting was. It was, but anyway, they they went to S G, I I sent them to S G R basically, we like to send them to S G R, and they got a, they got a, and had, and intergenerational. But we've been involved, uh first I was up in civil finance, and things like that, we started transparency. But it's been a lot of that type of thing all the time, so it had similarities. He's a good man, we've been on it forever. He's he can be challenging. But as a man, he was. Is that. Yeah. Well, it's actually existed since twenty three years, but they haven't had a water sensor, so for years, they were.
Actually, if you could.
Yeah. They definitely tried, so they found a groundwater solution, it's not large enough to supply the entire area, but it.
Oh, that's good.
It's over eighty foot, that's five square miles.
Oh, there you go.
Now, this is an actual groundwater source right there in San Antonio. He'll recharge everything else. Maybe as far as. I would rather. Okay, maybe it's different, so we can. Well, I believe when they talked to us, they had us before the president, and we asked, just today, is that what it was? I do. It's like taking building. And it's supposed to, uh, so like the president kind of decides something, maybe the orders, and one of them will fail. And Elon was supposed to make that. Of course, yeah. The most trouble that ever. The trouble. But you know, some of the our plans are, I guess, putting in uh. So I don't really understand. But it's all about the calculation, right? And so they were putting these with some good computers. I'll uh. That's just a weird thing, I just don't understand what you calculate, you know, a bit of a. It's something about, is it, you all get certain hours, and there's a thousand years of that. They all cryptostratched. I don't know, I was sorry, I won't be here. It's gonna be one of those. Yeah. And then it's time. Yeah, right, handling. Do you? You're right, I've never had one. Yeah. It's a lot of. Oh, yeah. Carrie doing all right, she never, I see her. It has somebody. Yeah, it has like a kitchen.
Oh, okay.
Kitchen. But it was just.
So sad. Like seeing.
She said, yeah, she said, we might get, trying to talk.
So terrible. It's like.
She said, yeah, so they they raised so much. They call it a place to call. They've been crazy. I want to have the renovation, it's like. Yeah, they're like, yeah, always. His daughter, that good. This is that, right, right. Decided always in a nice. Kind of word of fellowship. Fellowship. Yeah. It's like you're saying in turn. Something, kind of like the.
But of course you don't. He's killing twenty five.
Yeah, I've been to one, UFC, he's over all their home H bike systems and stuff like that. I bet it did that stuff. Do that stuff. I said I don't have a shade tree anywhere. But he does a good side. Yeah. Ten. He had. They have they have lots of challenges with that stuff. You know, it's it's just like everybody, you know. You want everything. You wanna go as long as you can without putting money in it. And it's pretty cool. That's that sucks a lot. It has. Oh, yeah. My sister. Carrie, the new facilities are made up though. That's where he's working most of. I mean, he. He works all the. But it would have been one for. But they all. He wasn't the new son last year. I first. I think the. And I think he's still. Now start doing. They have like three holders. Plates on all the.
Well, just come in. Just come in. Oh, my god.
Some guys better.
That's cute.
And they kind of also say you know, in some shorter ways.
See.
You end up. Cushion to. Or the size. Duck work. I think it was the Luger buildings where they had those. Or you for. Out of the building. Just over the end. George. So. I think what we're working well.
Such a.
Everything's got. Yeah. It's. I think it's a true.
Yeah, well, I actually. Um. Um, and it's like seeing. Or like do things like that, this and that, just like. So it's very like satisfying, isn't it. Like you're like you're seeing. People seeing colors. And I just. It's so weird, but. It's.
She's. She. Dangerful down there.
Okay.
Park here.
I saw.
That's. It's. Of course. No, of course.
I'm sure.
She's. She was working. So. She's. And he's got you to see. She gets. A true. Are true. Just. I'm trying to just. Oh, yeah. She's up.
Mm-hmm.
She's got. Just. And she not doing everything. And also keep. Probably better for. So she's trying to. She's out again, so I don't know. It's not.
Pretty.
Yeah. Not that. Do you have team of workers.
It's not various. Which are reasons.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, industry. Oh, yeah, they all know. They would have something like that. Got the. I know. Someone that are used to. No, we don't. You know what I did.
I'm watching it.
I'm not. Well, our straw is starting to squeeze. Very. Lots of schools. Yeah, it's a school. Two years. My neighbor class is. Don't. You do. She does. Uh. You do.
I know, right. Which is. Which is pretty good.
Yeah. I think that's after they. Competition. Oh.
Yeah.
I kept them.
I hate to.
That's.
The.
She needs. She's doing. Part of it. And they picked up. Which is by a few of the ponds around our. You know. We're part of businesses. I don't know for sure, but. But we do have project management. One of those. The best. The.
The tail. I just thought.
Yeah.
Um, I don't.
Yeah. She did. She's. She did. Suppose. And it's like. Another. It's. I think it's also like an. You know, we've been like. Call her off. We don't like to nail down that. Think that. We were. Thought we were gonna be alright. We should have. We did. I thought that was just. Man, the concrete brass. I believe. Drainage partner. He's on Scott. I know Scott. My friend is Scott, but. I think he. I think he. He might be galled that way. Isn't. Good brothers on this. It was probably a lot of home. Maybe in others. But. Ask. Yeah, we. Thirty kilometers. We need to go up and up to two seasons. Not not for sure. And then they look at it with sneaker shock, you know, and so. And then when you have to go up because of doing this, do you know that. This is just. Don't let them. Are you getting a lot of shoe mark up? We do. We. Oh, that's. John. What is that? Just. I mean, it's always talking. I mean, I don't know much about it. Yeah. Yeah, I said. See it. So. I said. There was a. I believe so. We're doing. Uh, but uh, I first. Still. Who did that design. So this is for that hotel. And I'm not. Personally, I'm not a big fan. The concept, I guess, is, you know, if you're an engineer. The builder, the contractor. The contractor. She defishes. I'm not sure how. We work at. Okay. She was just like, how is the. Oh, yeah. She's. She's like. Yes. This group's out there. I think there's. Like state. She built it. They used to be. And just. When I was working there, so I went through some. Training on it. They had. It was through some kind of design building. And they have these. Must be. Not an hour or two. Maybe. Signed up. It was. He had us. Pretty much. Just. Separating from the engineer. And almost making. The engineer and the contractor. They do have. It is. Come with you some. Flex. Flex. I don't know.
I don't know.
But it can. You know, it's just like being a record contractor. If you have good people on it. On it, that's best to be. You got. And. You gotta. It's hard to find. Situations where you always have everybody to do this just nature. We. Since it's. I'm not wired. They want you to. They want you to. There's so much. There's so. So. That one. All involved. They got. Some. And for the scum. This is from out. Take. They got. Now, there's a lot of quality concerns. But the process. Started. The issue arrives and all that. We had. An entity. That was kind of supposed to be a protected number, but you know. Which was more project. And then you had the contractor.
How we do.
And then you had. The. You have. So. Architecture. And it's not not the favorite part of the contract. Anyways. Did you go into that, of course. This was a public private partner. A lot of the funding came from. Private. So. So you want to be sure odds. Architects are showing all this beautiful stuff. And do they have they have organization. But they have one. And so you know. And and nobody's saying. You know, this is gonna cost. I expected that part of the budget. And. So. It got down to where, you know, all of a sudden, like the budget. When they're upset because you have shame on the style here and go to something else. But the biggest issue. Is they kept pressing. The contractor. They come up with guaranteed maximum price. There's two problems. They were pushing so much on time. I I was. And I'm not an architect. And I don't deal with architecture. I told them. The bill of. Charge. The contract. I got. Point. But anyway, they had. So the issue became. I'll tell you, those plans couldn't have been forty percent done. But you're supposed to be at least sixty year about a percent done, which is saving that guaranteed maximum price. And so their guaranteed maximum price came to suit the exceptions. Which I I can understand why they did. They'd be. They were just getting present on time. And so. Once you got the. Process. Have a guaranteed maximum price, except you just start realizing. All that's based on all the. Your. The people who present. You want to go. You can't afford to just go. So, you know, that's beyond the. Centrality. Foundations. That was weird. Our foundation. Anyway, they. Um, so there were some. Large changes. They really weren't. Extraordinary in terms of overall overall budget. They look like. And then, of course, when the council, there's guaranteed maximum price. They don't recognize that's based on a specific. You know, amount of work. That guaranteed maximum price, that's why they have the exceptions. So we got. Got contentious. Yeah. Yeah. Guaranteed maximum. They come. That's our. Can you stand with. They are working on. They're good. G M P. Red. First. Which Y O P. Have pretty decent. Yeah, they just. The foundation come out. It tells. So they figured a certain amount of foundations. That was certain death based on the. It's all that's. But once you got into construction. All of a sudden.
You're in.
Maybe. All of them. Be.
地区 regional.
So in these, in their exception sheet, it said. Thirty years. They have. They're going down. Forty percent of the average. Well, that. Almost be.
We can have.
About foundation. Yeah, that's. And that was. That was asking. How. 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 They said, well, it's it's common. When you do the architectures. We said like to get on the side. Lot of times. Geotop is not exactly what it looks like in. Why would you do. I don't know. Anyway, it's like. It seems like it's a big difference. It's well, we just had to. And what I think is they didn't realize how much load. They actually they underestimated the load.
You can pull that.
Yeah. Yeah. You also get. Point. Uh, a lot of people listen to all those. Debates about how you. Gets to the point where. You either just buy. Take it for the good. Get the project better. Or you find. You know. If you feel just about. And then.
Okay.
You have. You do it there. And a strand. But you also have to feel for the contractor. Recognizing the contractor. Doing what he can. There are ones that will gouge you obviously. Even once you walk in the end to be in. And that's a problem. Soon as often have, you know, you start. You start with a dollar amount instead of. First time you have second. And then you'll pay ninety cents instead of a dollar. And more people. You know you want. Then you really have to. Anything. I'd rather pay. I'd rather pay a good more. Also. Ten big strokes. Don't want. It's a little bit. Kind of a little bit. They had. She's actually.
It's a good.
She's. Strong. Yeah.
That's not. That's not cheap.
For.
I need to pay like.
The shortest.
To different levels, like. Chamber.
Yeah.
But it's. It's.
Yeah. That's. Our.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good project. Oh. It was. Jolly. Two. Just. I said. We were tied up. Just. It's. So. You see. The. You're. You're.
Yeah. So. People.
They study. And. And. They have like. So. So. I always. Do. Building. You know, so. It's.
Mm-hmm.
We're trying. We. Outside. We tell. Contractor. I'm. I like.
I sleep. No.
The way it has like, so I suppose it's. There's a deal with that, it was called Stark Gate. The. Well, you know, that hotel project in Odessa. So, um, once the contractor breaking ground, they had got the quote. That was character in the low. And when they started construction. They actually told me, they said, no. It's not. They had already come through something out of the Q. Know we did the electric theater, the A and X system, all that was done by somebody else. They could see the night. They actually paid for the whole. Five hundred billion, five hundred billion. For sure, you had to do artificial intelligence. Open a, uh.
Oh, she might be.
What's it?
It's in there.
I just think we still. I still think we need to pay it on the calendar that Judy's got a code on.
We'll make a proclamation next week. Ms. Norman, can I give you that? Thank you.
We'll make a proclamation that she wore jackets.
Yeah.
I'm just excited she's gonna go start my truck after meetings. You need a man, do you? You need a lifesaver? It's funny how one starts and then it's.
Drop us down. Yes, sir.
All right, it is seven forty eight P M. I'd like to announce that we have reconvened after executive session and we have no items to discuss. So we'll be moving on to new business item number B, discussing, consider approving and issuing R F P number twenty five dash oh one. Automated metering infrastructure system for procurement and implementation. Mr. Mike?
Mayor Council, this agenda item is kind of a follow up. A discussion that we've had in previous meetings, conversation I've had with each one of you. But this is actually taking the first formal step to issue a R F P to start looking at replacing our our meters within town and within the city. Uh, right now, approximately three thousand meters, I believe, we have, maybe a little over three thousand total. Uh, what this will do, uh, what we're requesting here is, um, to accept and approve, uh, R F P twenty five oh one. Which would allow Park Hill, Smith and Cooper to issue an R F P to be able to start receiving, uh, bids on an A M I system. Um, I do have, uh, Mr. Thomas Kerr with us, who is with Park Hill, who we reached out to, we've been talking to from the beginning. If you remember, uh, last summer, or I'm sorry, in the spring, we're having these initial conversations with another organization, another entity. Uh, Park Hill was involved in those conversations from the beginning. So I think it was just natural for us to begin to start working with them, and then because they'd already been, uh, pretty much procured to start doing this process. But now we're actually having a formal, uh, presentation to you. Uh, I would probably, if you don't mind, have Mr. Kerr come up and kind of give you his credentials. He's actually worked for cities in the past and has been a long, you know, uh, in- individual in this process. But, uh, this, the R F P that you have is the draft R F P. And if you approve it, which will be a part of what, uh, we will present out. I would tell you to make one note, that after this was submitted to you, uh, there was one change made, and I can be, tell you that copy. There was one change made, which now would require the contractor, when they go through to put the valves in, to do an inventory of lead and copper. T C Q requiring that we do have an inventory of lead and copper in town, uh, in order to do replacements of the lead and copper, and identify that. So that whatever contractor is selected, they would actually identify that and present that information to us, so we know exactly what we have lead and copper in town. Which is a requirement by T C Q. I think Mr. Kerr could probably, uh, dive a little bit deeper into that as to why that's happening, but that's what this R, this R F P is, uh, before.
Welcome, Terry.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, everything Mike said is very, very, uh, v- very much of the project, but, uh, we are issuing this, uh, I drafted this up as an R F P. Which means if you have the opportunity to wait the vendors based on certain criteria. You don't necessarily just have to take the least price. A lot of times, we want, obviously, want to do things as cost effectively as possible. But sometimes that may not mean you're getting good support for your work, and you're not getting, you know, as good of materials, in certain cases, though. And so this allows you to wait the vendors and, uh, and making sure that they they can support you in this area and those types of things. The, uh, uh, so the, there are five evaluation factors in the proposal. Fifty points out of a hundred would be for the bid price. Twenty points would be, uh, ongoing system support. And that'll be really important for you because, uh, these meters are gonna have technical aspects that, you know, the manufacturer and vendor will be the most knowledgeable about. And so you will want to be able to get that support well, well handled. Uh, ten points is for their experience in putting in these systems, so coming out and, uh, changing out all the meters. And ten points is for the quality of their past work. And ten points would be for the history of completion of projects on time. So that's, once you receive your proposals, they'll be providing you quite a bit of information on how they do this, what systems, what meters, what, uh, infrastructure they use. How they plan to implement it, and how they've done it in other places and references. So, uh, we can make a good selection for you in that means. Um, and I do apologize for the late addition on the lead and copper item. But I did, I did check to see how critical it was for permit at this time, and how, uh, effective it was in terms of T C Q requirements. Uh, uh, this is a method that is being utilized by other cities as well. And so when they come out to change the meters, they'll use what's a hydroback type of piece of equipment. Basically, it'll jet some water in, stir up any, they have to do it for the meters anyway, to clean out your meter boxes, so that jets it up, and then it vacuums it out. Well, they can use that same equipment on each side of the meter box to get down to your service line. So the line going up to your house, they'll see it right outside the meter box. And there are methods that, uh, the T C Q has in guidance for checking to see if that's a lead line, galvanized, or if it's copper or otherwise. And so they can do that on both sides, and they create this inventory in a database for you. That database will be available, you have to make it available for your citizens and your customers to be able to see it. So they can see whether you found lead on their side or not. If you do, um, there's certain notification requirements as well under the T C Q. This is a requirement of the T C Q. It was, it's actually, uh, federal law that came down through the T C Q as well. But it is required by law for these things to be categorized in all cities. And so it is something that, uh, will help get the process done for you. It's probably, uh, in terms of the meter changeout, it probably has about a, uh. See, I think we were looking at about ten to twenty percent more on each meter changeout. But, um, it is something that you need to do, and this will probably be more cost effective than having somebody else have to go out to each side and and make those discoveries for you. Um, so the project does include the, uh, the vendor. Setting up what equipment he's going to purchase for you to put in. The vendor putting in all the infrastructure that you'll have, uh, receivers on some towers, or one or two towers. Those will receive the communications and by radio from your meters that go into the boxes. And so it'll receive that data daily, and sometimes more than once daily, depending on the system that's adopted. It will record the readings going through that meter at least hourly through the day on some due quarter, every fifteen minutes. So, all this data will be collected, and if you, a lot of this can be used for looking for leaks. You know, you can find out, say, your water bill looks just a lot larger than you expected last, last month or something. You can actually see where your water usage jumped, and whether it's staying up at night when you wouldn't be using water, and those types of things. So, uh, this will be made available to you also from a customer portal software that they will provide you. And that will be part of their system that that you, that you can use. Your customers will be able to get on their phones and look at their bills and look at what their water usage looks like. The, uh, software that they provide will be integrated with Tyler Technologies, which is your billing software. And so their data, the data from these meters will be transmitted into that system as well, or transferred, and your billings can be made off of that. And so your, uh, customer representatives can actually look up, if you call and ask me about your, your bills and why they're this, or what what happened. They can look it up and they can see what your, your usage look like, they can print out a, a, a sheet that shows what your usage was superb, and those types of things. So this will include all of, all of your meters. There will be cases where you may need to have lids replaced. Well, most of them will have lids replaced, going to, uh, right now, you probably have a lot of cast iron lids. So a lot of them will be replaced with a traffic rated plastic type of lid. Some places you will have to stay with cast iron just because it may be heavy traffic, like if you have some heavy trucks over and that type of thing. But, uh, so there's replacement for those items in here. We have in, uh, a opinion of probable construction cost for the entire project, including a fifteen percent contingency on top of the base. Uh, that would put you at about two, two million nine hundred thirty two thousand, one hundred ninety eight dollars and forty cents. We, we hope to be lower than that, but, uh, that's, that's kind of making sure that we have a. We're looking to advertise, uh, starting by Monday at the latest, very quickly. And, um, opening on March fourth. And then we'll have an evaluation. We have, we're having the pricing, requesting the pricing be held open for a hundred and eighty days. Uh, my understanding is they're looking at bond issuance or something, so you may not have your funds available at the moment that we open. And so we give it, give you some time to get those funds before you have to. And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't tell you. Okay, I worked with San Angelo for twenty two years, and I, uh, my last few years in San Angelo, we were implementing a A M I changeout. Uh, in Odessa, when I started there, I was there for ten years. First got to Odessa and we did a full deployment of A M I systems there. So I'm familiar with it, uh, the technology continues to progress and gets better and stronger, but, uh, I have worked in several projects. There are several vendors that, uh, be very, that are very qualified for this type of work and do it all over the place. There are other cities just like you that have done these systems, Hartford, Minn, and we've worked with several of those.
Is any of the data shared with Park Hill of the survey we had done?
Yes, they did receive all that information.
And this tonight is just strictly to authorize the R F P?
And I will, uh, kind of talk a little bit about the financing. The reason we're trying to hold on to it is because with the, uh, cost that we're looking at, uh, and other items that we're looking also in the future of various other places. And city services that we would need, the buildings, you know, best part. Uh, we are probably looking at maybe a bond issuance, which will be a conversation that we will have with our financial advisor and investment advisor. We're gonna see what those numbers might look like, uh, and there'll be a decision of the council to how we want to do that bond issuance, which will be a discussion that we'll hold down the road. Uh, but that's the reason we're looking for a hundred and eighty day, uh, hold on the, that pricing in order for us to be able to get the financing set up. If it's, my, my understanding is that whoever was normally the buyer, they would not move forward with that project and and do anything with it until we know that they, until they know that we have the funding in place to be able to pay for it. And so, again, that's the reason for the hundred and eighty day hold.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we proceed with issuing R F P twenty five oh one for the A M I project to invite qualified vendors to submit their proposals.
I'll second.
The motion is second to approve and issue R F P twenty-five dash oh one, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you for your diligence on that. Okay, moving on to item C, which is, is a R F Q. To discuss and consider R F Q number twenty-four dash twelve for landscape architect services for Vest Park improvements. Mike, you want to get us up to speed and introduce the votes?
Yeah, Mayor Council, I think that in your packet of information you received it, we, uh, we have submitted the R F Q, uh, for landscape architect. We held it open, uh, and then we closed it and, uh, had to put it through the information brought to us. Uh, we did receive two qualification presentations, one being from Park Hill, Smith and Cooper, the other being from, uh, Kimley Horn, which I believe you had that information in front of them before you. Uh, this would simply be to approve a landscape architect, uh, to, um, begin that work of developing and, um, especially formulating a plan for us to review Vest Park. Uh, you know, I, I can tell you at this point in time, we have, we have pretty much cut out what we would think we would like, what we'd like to see. But this will actually take the formal step of having someone begin to start designing and to figure out, okay, well, you know, you, you have, you know, uh, ten acres too short of park in order to get everything that you want in there. And so there'll be a process that will begin to start working with the landscape architect and city staff and also the council. Uh, I would really like to start bringing in the parking recreation board in this conversation. Uh, because that's pretty much the, the purpose of what they serve. And it could be if the council chooses to say, you know what, let the parking record handle it. And if we go from there and bring the presentation and a report back to the council, we can do that as well. If we want them involved, we'll have that conversation with the council. As however the council chooses to do that. Uh, but that's what you have before you is presentation of that. Uh, I made the, uh, the two submitters aware that we'd have a meeting tonight in the event that they would want to, uh, or that you would want to talk to them and interview them, which is a part of the submission that we had out there. Uh, we do have representatives of Kimley Horn here. Uh, I'm not seeing anybody from Park Hill, uh, present, but, but you have present, you have, do, do have individuals from Kimley Horn present who can be, uh, come up and be able to ask, answer any questions that you may have at the base on their presentation.
Would you like to call Kimmy Horn up? Ask him some questions, grill him a little bit?
Sure. Oh, yeah, I see.
You see? We'll go ahead and have him come up, Mike?
Yeah. I think we have Catherine Youth and, uh, Ray Corosco and I don't know who's gonna be presenting. Stephen or Catherine? Okay, W and interview some seven.
Sure, I'm Catherine Utech with Kimley Horn. Uh, I'm project manager for Vest Park. I introduced myself last time, but been with Kimley Horn twelve years. I'm a landscape architect licensed in Texas and Oklahoma, and I'm also a licensed irrigator. So I'd be the point of contact for the Vest Park. I'll let Ray and Stephen introduce themselves, so I'll be a part of the team.
Hello, good evening, my name is Blake Corosco, uh, and I'm working with them, I've been with them almost twenty-one years. Uh, I'm a Kermit native, I'm a class of nineteen ninety-three, uh, go way back. Uh, and my, my specialty is, is roadway, uh, pedestrian, A D A, uh, sites of, uh, engineering network. And I'll, I'll be supporting Catherine and her team, uh, both from just the local, um, perspective and serving out of our love of office.
Hello, my name's Stephen Sims, um, been with Kimley Horn for about ten years now. And I lead the Texas, uh, state of Texas with, for Kimley Horn with our, our grant and alternative funding team. So helping very much cities like yourself, uh, seek funding for those necessary projects and improvements that, uh, need to be made in order to secure the city's safety and, and, uh, good work.
So, um, I think, I don't, I, I, I don't know if we really have sp- spoken in depth what we want, um, but y'all been out there and kinda, y'all presented us a?
Yes, we visited the site several times.
Yes.
Um, last time y'all briefly went over a sort of list of what your desires and needs for the park. Um, obviously pending who you move forward with, I think a strong piece of this project would be community engagement. Um, whether that's a workshop style, online survey, sometimes that's a little bit better to reach folks. It's hard to get people to come in person nowadays, but, um, there's several different platforms and methods that we can use to get, you know, cut community engagement, stakeholder engagement. That's a big piece of what we do at Kimley Horn and what we can bring to the table. And I think it's very important to have recurring meetings, making sure that we're meeting the needs of everyone.
That's kinda where I wanted to hear the community engagement is a big, you know, thing for me.
Yeah, before we, um, drafted anything, presented that to the public, we would make sure that Parks Board, City Management, City Council, Mayor, all of y'all are on board with, with that process. And along with that development piece of it too, we always come up with a cost estimate. So again, going back to that budget piece, really striving hard to make sure that we're within the budget, that y'all have allotted for this park or give you, at least give you a rough idea of what it could cost of what you guys would have. And another great piece of that too is your project from a phasing perspective. So where, where you may not be able to improve everything right off the bat, um, we could phase it in a way where, okay, let's get phase one done now, see what that maybe generates, what that brings to the community. And then that could hopefully push for a phase two. Um, so keeping that in mind too is y'all move forward with the park.
I think that's why we call Stephen, Stephen about the grants, tell, tell him about the grants.
Yes.
Yeah, and Stephen's great too from, you know, certain, there are certain elements that you can include in a park that are covered by grant funding. So that's another piece that we bring to the table and we're able to help assist y'all with, you know, oh, we want, not saying this is necessarily an element that you put out at Vest Park, but if you wanted a, a soccer field, right, there are soccer field grants out there and there's lighting grants. And there's all sorts of things that Stephen and his team have assisted all of his partners of Kimley Horn with funding for cities, so.
Splash pad grant.
Yes.
Pickleball court.
Pickleball court, yes, we were talking about that earlier.
So I, I saw your firm did Bedford Boys Ranch in Bedford, Texas. Is that the recent renovation?
Um, yes, that is.
Unbelievable.
It's been several years.
Yeah.
And that was, um, predecessor of mine, he's in Allison's retired, but, um, he worked on that phase.
That's amazing what, what y'all did over there.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Crazy. I got pictures, you'll see. It's amazing, really is. We can't afford that, but. Uh, most recent work for you, uh, Catherine, in the area?
In the area, most recent would be Slater Park and U T P G Splash Pad in Odessa. I also helped with the Midland Washington Pool in Midland. Um, that's the most recent out here. This would be, um, an exciting opportunity for me to expand my practice out here and definitely looking to work out here, knowing Ray's from here. And then we also have Chris Kull Zuvia, who's on the org chart. She's a P E in the same office I'm located, we're in Port Worth. But she's a native and being able to accommodate two partners of mine, uh, with their hometown, creating a space for them to come back to and their families and come visit is very important to me and very meaningful for me, so.
Oh, Stephen, on your page here, it says that Lamisa C D G B application in Abernathy, did they get those?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Good job, Stephen.
Good job. Let's do that.
Stephen's very good at this.
Awesome, thank y'all so much for coming and staying in touch with us and putting this together for us.
You're welcome.
Yes, we're loving it.
We're so excited to see.
Oh, yeah.
A transformation there, so.
Yes, we're, we're ready to burn new life. You knew what it used to look like.
I used to, I used to practice, uh, Little League.
Yes, yes. And it used to be a beautiful park and we wanna bring, we wanna make it even better.
Does anybody have any further questions for, for the group that's here?
No.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank y'all, thank you so much.
Okay, so any further questions or comments before we move to our motion?
Mayor Council, I do also want to let you know in accordance with the, uh, R F Q that was put out there, there was a review committee that was put together and I do want to present this and let you know, um, there were three reviewers. It, it was reviewed by the committee, uh, but I do want to let you know that you are not in any way, shape or form obligated to consider this, uh, or it, follow what it says. You can still have your own motion based on what, uh, you seen in the packet and have a decision to make, be made from that. Uh, but, uh, as, as I was mentioning there, we had the two that submitted a qualifications. Uh, of those two, Park Hill ranked the highest with Kimmy Horn coming in second. Uh, I think that you've seen through their presentations that they each do quality work. And no matter what, we're gonna get a quality landscape architect come in here. Um, but again, it, it's a part of our review process, part of R F Q, this was in that and I wanted to make sure we fulfill that piece of it for you to see. But it, it, again, holds no, um, it doesn't tie your hands whatsoever. You can still do whatever you like.
And as part of this motion?
The process of working with the, uh, landscape architect firm that's been selected and we'll be, now begin to start that process of engagement, uh, begin to start a designs that we say we want to do. Uh, or it could be just the whole thing that we'd like to do. Be then responsible for ensuring that the construction of that begin to start taking place and overseeing it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so Council before, anybody wanna go first?
I personally. Go, you go first, go ahead.
No, go, you can.
I'm personally leaning on Vest Park improvements because Park Hill is great, we've used them and we know they have good quality work. I feel like maybe, um, getting, spreading the word, spreading.
Kimmy Horn, okay.
With Kimmy Horn.
I'm kind of in agreeance with current past and could be in the future. And, um, and I appreciate them taking the time to come in and meet with us personally this evening.
I agree, I think.
Wayne County, having it, it's gone with city, having it, it's gone back to the school. And then we took it and then we didn't move it and then we gave it to the county and then we enjoyed it.
It's back home.
And be productive.
Where it needs to be.
Yes.
Ms. Council, did you have anything you wanted to?
I'm in agreement, I just wanted to, uh, to say thanks for y'all coming out and putting effort into this. You can, you can tell. And I'm just looking forward to seeing the improvements. And I also agree with Karina that we are, we've awarded Park Hill some other things, so it's best to s- spread things out a little bit.
Yeah, I like the ideal of having our Kermit natives come back and, you know, you know what the park meant to us and some of the elements we want to keep, we're very excited, we're ready to get going last year. But we'll take it this year.
Coming up too as well, so I'm, I'm in agreement with y'all, I don't have a vote, but I, I like the fresh blood. I like the, the skin in the game that Ray has and, uh, so I'll entertain our motion if y'all are through with discussion.
I'll make a motion to, um, go ahead and, um, get Kimmy and Horn, Kimley and Horn aboard on the, um, Vest Park project.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to issue the R F Q twenty-four twelve for landscape architect services for Vest Park to Kim.
We'll call y'all tomorrow.
First Edition, this is located on North Spruce Street between West Washington, uh, West San Antonio Street and West Waco for the purposes of the Department of Agriculture Community Development Grant.
As you know, we received a, uh, C D P G grant from T D A for an amount of five hundred thousand dollars. In the process, uh, of course, working with Park Hill, Smith and Cooper on this project, you see the initial, uh, map that I gave you of what we were looking at, which is the Kermit map, very first one you see. And then, uh, once they started going out and looking at the, uh, property lines and the plats, we found out that nothing was in line. Um, and I want to take you to the very last page, um, of this document that you have, uh, which is kind of its sketch, it's just a black and white. Uh, I, I want to point out to you that if you look at the dark black lines, that that is what we are proposing to do in this block. Okay, that's, that's where the lines will end up. If you look at the, kind of the, um, that is where the plat currently resides. So essentially what you see there is we have our backyard. So nothing is aligned, everything is crooked. Uh, so what we ended up having to do is go through a replat process because the C D P will, are we okay? Any, any improvement of, of construction on this setup, we did not have easement because all the lines were, uh, I think it's an engineering term, was cattywampus. Yeah. So we had to go through there and replat this whole thing. We had to contact, once they started this process, uh, we had to get every property owner to sign it. Well, we had to file an amendment, well, let me backtrack, Waco, and then dead ending on E, on West Waco. And then just kind of putting a little median between there, so she, uh, ended up leaving Park Hill. We got a new engineer, whose name is Mike Mulcher. He looked at the plans, he says, I think we could put a turnaround in there. I think we can make it fit, so we put that in there. The other side of that, if you remember that, if you, if you recollect that particular street, there's a fence that is, uh, that, so they're now going to have to move their fence to the property line that they have in order to be able to comply, so that we have enough room to put the street in there. The, uh, second sheet that, uh, I skipped now coming back to, that lets you know what the street will look like. And so if, if you look at this page, it's got the reddish in it. You, you can see that forward, we have to accept this replat of block seventy-five first edition in order to be able to tell, uh, uh, the Department of Agriculture that the replat has now been approved by the council and, uh, that we have approved it and they can now move forward. And we can start now on the street renovation of that. Uh, once we get, it'll be pretty rapid once that happens. The, the longest part we had is getting this replat done because it was a matter of contacting all of the property owners getting them to, to agree to replating. And actually, just so you know, it's a side benefit for the property owners because of, sir, I'll be stubborn. This is the only one we're tackling right now, but I can tell you that at some point in time, if we, uh, are looking at other streets, which we were applying for grants, another gr- all of the property owners.
They're property owners, okay.
The residents did not object either.
Okay.
But we had to contact the property owners.
Cause some of them are rented.
Rented properties.
This is very long to.
But again, the residents that showed up, they were totally for it because they get a paved, paved street.
With sidewalk and.
And sidewalk.
Very nice.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion we approve the replat.
Approve the replat of block seventy-five first edition, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on, D V twenty-three dash oh three nine four, Mike?
Mayor Council, this is a, um, a discussion item only, it's a formality. I have to present to the council that, uh, we are in compliance with section three of the, uh, grant that we have. And especially if they live close to the project locations that we employ by it. It's a requirement of the, um, federal grant which is passed on through T. They're gonna track the number of hours of the grant project that we're working on uh, and be able to report that back of low and very low income workers that they employ. And you receive that documentation also, what that section three looks like, the policy update, which is a requirement.
And Park Hill will track all that, correct, as part of it?
Yes.
So that was discussion only?
That's a discussion item only.
Anybody got any questions for Mike on that? We'll move along. Uh, item F is to discuss and consider approving R F Q twenty-five oh two, which is for qualified engineering services list for the year twenty twenty.
To obtain a list of what we call qualified engineers and we can pull from that list. Uh, an example given is, uh, once we submit this list and the, the R F Q that you see before you is to have a list of three engineers that will help, that'll be on our list. And as projects come up, I can contact an engineering firm and they say, hey, I've got this project I want you to work on, project X. And can you begin to start that process? And we're gonna bring it forward, council, whether it's renovation of our building, uh, whether it's a development of, uh, of a solid waste transfer station. But without having to go to the council and put it out there and select an engineer and then move from that point, the, the, this qualified list gives me the opportunity to go ahead and select and, and contact a, uh, engineering firm, get that piece done and start working with them so that we can make a presentation to council of the project that we're looking at. So basically what this is. So basically what this is, is uh, you know, request by some of the engineering firms, which may be located in the city council chambers at this time, uh, that they would have the opportunity to be able to submit to us that they're interested in being on our qual-
How many firms are you looking at on your list?
Three.
Total of three?
Okay. Some, in, some municipalities may have, you know, six or seven, you get the larger cities, they may have thirty. Uh, but with our size, I think three would suffice.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve to issue RFQ twenty-five oh two for the establishment of a qualified engineering services list in compliance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter twenty-two fifty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFQ twenty-five oh two for creating a qualified engineer service list, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G on-
Counsel, this is kind of a follow-up, I think we've had several discussions that began with, do we want to do it? This, and then we, it moved into, can you give us some conceptual sketch drawings? And then to follow, item zero two, which is located at the top left corner of the picture. Um, the, the primary difference between these two, which I believe is maybe the only difference, is the yellow jacket. Uh, and so that's the only difference that you see there, that are, that's there. You also have with you a um, a bid by Shader Barnes that states that either one that you choose uh will run sixty-three, sixty-three thousand four hundred dollars. This will be used, uh, the funding will be, come out of our hot money. Uh, the drawing we're looking at will be on the Public Works Building on three oh two. And that's where the, the mural will take place and be, and have, so you'll be seeing it's immediate entrance coming in. Uh, with the eastbound on three oh two, coming in from the left, if you want eastbound, you'll be able to see it right there on the Public Works Building.
One question I have, have we, we do have permission from Jim Sharp that needed, cause that, I know, anything with him is copyrighted. So I just wanted to make sure we don't get this drawn and then something come up.
The city shop.
Right.
You know, um, that, oh, we didn't get that and-
Great point.
Are, are you talking about the bull rider, you're talking about the address?
The bull rider.
The, the bull rider.
I did talk to his mom and she knew that we were going to um do this and he would be in it. But I don't know, I mean, we should probably-
We can, we can reach out to him, I think what we're looking at here is honoring uh Jim Sharp in that respect.
Right, she didn't have a problem with it when I talked to her, but I think that we should show her this.
Right.
He's still alive, correct?
Yes, he is, yes, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He lives in-
So um-
And, and either drawing is not gonna change, so if you select one, we'll still proceed with that.
Sure.
Uh, to make sure, I think that the draw, I don't know where this drawing came from, I don't know if it's conceptualized to be actually Jim Sharp or a bull rider.
Right.
I don't know which one it is, so.
Maybe it was a facial thing that were actually used, now I just want to make sure we're-
It looks just to me like it's a bull rider.
Yeah, yeah, and I know that when I visited with, when I visited with Taylor, when I visited with Taylor, she was trying to find a picture of Jim Sharp. And uh, we looked online and she looked online, wasn't able to identify an actual picture of him. And I think we actually reached out to the mom, tried to see if she had a picture. I, I don't think we've ever uh received one, so uh, again, I, I, that's kind of where we're at, but we would definitely reach out.
Yeah, I think we put the caveat in whatever y'all decide to have a, have a letter, a letter of release or whatever.
These are both awesome drawings.
Yeah, can I say something real quick? Before we move on, I mean, I, they, they are very good, I, I really do like, but I'm not sure what murals were on. And I'm not sure if we got other quotes, are we?
We did not, it's-
I would, I mean-
It's, that, that's a pretty good price, the thirty-eight dollars a square foot, it's, it's gonna be that if not more from others. I know they, the one they did over in Monahans, they priced around and she did the one over there and they went with her.
Cause I know the past, if it was over fifty, we would get a bid or, I would just like to get one more, just, just for-
We, we can reach out to and find an artist and uh, kind of start that process with that artist about a conceptual sketch and presentation to the council so they can have uh an idea. What, what I don't want to do is to take the mural that's been presented to us like that.
Exactly, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That the other artists would have to develop their own-
Yes.
Yeah, I think if we could just get a price per square foot, then we could worry about the drawing.
Yes, there you go, yeah.
Later, yeah, if we could just get it.
Yeah, we have lots of places at any murals.
Yes, exactly.
I know they said what Monahans received was anywhere from about thirty-eight to forty dollars a square foot to like a hundred dollars a square foot. I mean, I, so apparently they got several different bids over there before they went with theirs.
That's what I would like to do. I don't want to jump the gun right now, I'd like to kind of shuffle around and then, I think, I guess we need to-
Take it.
Table this.
And I know that when I, when I visited with Ms. Barnes, uh, one of our first conversations, um, and I asked her about the price per square foot, she did tell me it depends on the detail of, yes, drawing. You know, she said it could be from, you know, thirty-eight and I could go much higher, but it also depends on the detail of what you want me to put up on the mural.
Okay.
So if you would like, we can uh go out and see if we can get a price per square foot. I would have to figure out how to do that because I don't want to show them and say, you need to compete against this. But I have feeling I'm gonna have the same conversations with them is, okay, well, how detailed do you want it to be? We'll determine what the price is gonna be. But we can definitely start that process.
And before we take any further action, does anybody have a preference on, y'all want to discuss the two murals while we're-
I like number two.
I like number two.
I don't like that yellow jacket and the first one.
I don't.
I don't like that one.
Definitely one of two.
Yeah, I agree with the artistic-
The, the colors blend in better.
Well, and everything else is artistic.
Yes.
Rendering versus-
Yeah.
You're right.
Something that may change, school mascot, ideas change as well, so.
While we're also talking about this building, can we go ahead and get the, it's not included in this, but the-
The windows covered.
Yes, the windows, where it's the plywood.
Yeah, that'll be something that we'll be able to do it from, uh, within our budget.
Okay.
We'll cover it first.
Okay.
And we still have, we still have the lift doors, the garage doors, but she'll paint on that, but the rest of that will be-
Okay.
I make the motion we table this um, mural.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table item G uh on our agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to table carries. Okay, item H, we're in a discussion of RV ordinance.
Mayor, counsel, there's been a, a, a discussion that we've had um as a whole, as a body and also individually that I've had with you concerning the RV ordinance. Um, and just by way of uh, ex- expediency, the introduction of this current ordinance um of twenty dash oh seven, uh, based on research that I found, which supported the zoning code. Uh, and in that zoning code is where you have this piece of the discussion that we're having right now. But it's an all encompassing document that covers every piece of zoning within the city of Kermit. Uh, but the first introduction of this was, uh, introduced in June of twenty twenty. Uh, there was a, it seemed to be a very extensive discussion that was held in July of twenty twenty. And in that, you find uh discussion about uh removing uh certain sections of the piece of the zoning, uh, of the RV, uh, ordinance of the RV zoning that we did, that we've been in, in question discussing. Um, and I think from that point, then we go into November, where they had the first reading of the document, and then they had the second reading of the document. Uh, and there's, there was brought to light um the, the piece of the uh zoning code that had some uh language that was uh stricken out based on conversation that was held. But when you look at the ordinance that we have online and what we have in the books, the two items that were considered to be um, discussion piece that, that the consensus was to strike out, uh, was still intact in the version that we have. Um, and so I kind of began a, uh, kind of a research project of trying to find out exactly which one we had based on the conflicting information that I had. Uh, I can come to you now and tell you that uh I have no supporting document that says that the language of the stricken out version uh that's been around and we've seen and I've presented to you um, is, is correct. What, what I believe that we currently have right now in the ordinance uh of the, the language on the RV uh is the correct uh ordinance that we are following. Uh, is supported by a signature by at that time Mayor Jared Phillips, who signed the ordinance twenty dash oh seven. And the first reading and the second reading. And the documentation that supports that ordinance, uh, the zoning code ordinance is again, the language that contains the RV parking in the front yard is protected. And so that, so I come to you for you today, I can tell you that this, this is probably an overall arching conversation that we need to have, not just on the, on the RV, but the entire zoning and planning and zoning for the city. And I would propose that at some point in time, if you're comfortable with it in coming to February, uh, that we begin to have a conversation about the overall zoning in the city and begin that conversation with planning and zoning to do an overarching um review of our planning and zoning code in the city of Kermit to bring it up to date to where we need to, to ensure that uh furnished property that's on major thoroughfares is uh considered to be commercial, so we can bring retail in, uh, and not considered to be uh either residential or manufactured housing, which is the current ordinance that we have right now. And so I, I do want to take a look at an overall arching uh review of our zoning code. But in reference to this item, I, I would tell you that through the research that I found, I don't, I, I did not find anything that um states that the ordinance that the city has, has on the books and has been following uh is incorrect. It is sufficient, it, it does support the ordinance that was signed by Mayor Jerry Phillips at that time. And available for any questions.
So, so I agree, I think, I think as a whole, we need to, in, in February, bring that to the agenda and, and do a complete review of, of zoning ordinances. Make sure that we have, to the best of our knowledge, everything up to date and current. So, so your information to us is the ordinance that we are enforcing is the one that's signed and in the book. And-
That's correct.
We, we know there were other things, but we don't know what happened, right?
That's correct, and I have uh consulted with our city attorney and uh he is in agreement that there is no, uh, there's no proof that what we currently have on the books that's codified, that you can see on the website, is incorrect. We are, we are enforcing the ordinance as is uh presented to you at this point in time.
Ms. Barry, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Come on up. Thanks for being so patient tonight, too.
Um, it's been, been a minute. Okay, so I mean, I understand your point of view, like we've had discussions on this before, quite a few, I think. Um, I mean, I don't, I don't understand it and I don't agree with it, I, I, I just don't. Um, what was discussed in July was that they were in the consensus to remove A and B. Then it was never discussed again and then voted on. So I don't understand how that would be the correct version if the discussion was, hey, yeah, we don't really want to do this. Uh, and then the vote, and then another vote, and they're like, oh, yeah, we're gonna, this is gonna be an ordinance. I don't particularly understand that at all. Um, I guess just basically because, I mean, I feel like you can't just say someone changed their mind, you know what I mean? Uh, there needs to be a record of it, needs to be documented. Uh, this kind of ensures transparency, you know, lets us know what's going on, not, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna decide, you know, this, have discussion on this. And then, oh, blah, blah, four years later, we changed our mind. So basically what you're saying is this code is gonna stand. Uh, that's basically what this council and this, y'all are saying, it's that this is gonna stand.
Right, and to re- reiterate your point, the only thing we have right now that was signed is the non-struck version. So we were, we can't say we changed our mind because what we have to go by is the signed version with no strikeouts. So what we're talking about is revisiting that at a later date and letting the council look at that and try to, but we can't go back and create documents to support it when we have an ordinance that's signed by the mayor twice and the backup documents don't have the stricken amount, so. We all hon- honestly understand frustration and we want to fix it, but we can't assume, as you said, what they wanted to do or not do, we can only go by what is in the official documents signed by the mayor. And there was no minutes to back up a vote, nothing, and it was during COVID, uh, we can offer you a million excuses, but we can only go by what is signed by the mayor that got put into the system.
Okay, so basically, the one that's on the books is gonna continue to be enforced.
At this time, yes ma'am.
So y'all are going to, I know the last time we spoke, they had halted the issuing of parking violations. Are those going to start being reissued? Or is that still gonna be held off while this is being reconsidered?
So it's not being reconsidered as, as it's written, so I think I'm correct in saying it will be enforced as it's written until it is changed. Is that a correct terminology?
And, and I do, and that's, and that's correct, and I do want to, uh, just a point of clarification, there have been no citations issued. There have been uh-
Parking violations.
But there, there's no citations issued for the RV parking at all.
Right.
Every time that a vehicle's been tagged, we come into compliance. The, the property owner, the RV owner is coming to compliance, we have actually not issued any RV citations at all for that. They've been notified that it's improperly parked and they need to move it, and that's when they come into compliance.
Yeah, the, the, we've, we've had to come into compliance, we have no other choice.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying it's not the case.
I mean, it's just that simple, it's comply or get a citation.
Yeah, and, and we have to enforce the ordinance as it's written. We can't arbitrarily, as you said, change our mind either and, and not enforce it. Because it's an ordinance that was passed and signed under-
But you can reconsider it.
And, and I told you, that's what we are gonna do.
Okay, so I did have a statement, since this is where we're gonna go with this. Um, I mean, honestly, if the goal is to beautify Kermit, um, there are a lot of other issues. Lots of other issues that can be looked at and focused on.
And while we all hear you-
Not my RV and my own personal driveway.
While we all hear you, tonight's agenda item is on the RV ordinance.
Uh-huh.
So, but we do hear you. Hope you hear what I'm saying, but we, tonight's agenda item is only on the RV ordinance.
So, I have to come back in a month then, and have another statement about, about this?
About anything outside of the RV ordinance. And I don't want you to think you have to, I would welcome you to come back because we need your input, had y'all not brought this to our attention, we wouldn't have known. So, so that's what, it's a, it's a, it's an interchange of information, so I, I would hope you'd feel that you, you're able to come back, not that you have to, does that make sense?
I know I have to, because I should be able to park my RV in my own personal private driveway. That driveway belongs to, to me and my husband.
Yep.
We purchased that piece of property. We take care of it, we maintain it, we take the time to keep it beautiful. That RV being in the driveway should not be an issue.
But it's an ordinance that was passed in twenty twenty. As it's written, as it's written right now.
So when, when is this gonna be discussed again?
We can't discuss it until we put it on an agenda.
When are we gonna do that?
We have meetings every month, so it most likely be in February.
So-
We're just bound by certain things, ma'am.
But we, but we- It will be on the agenda in February?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. And we're just bound by certain things that we have to, we have to put it on the agenda in order to consider changing it or not changing it or whatever the council decides to do.
Okay, so, February.
It will be on the agenda in February.
To, to, trying to make this clear, like, um, the ordinance that is now presented, it's the ordinance that we know that, so we're not changing our minds because this is all the ordinance that we have, we know, and then we go online and this is what the, the city citizens have. So we, you know, are, are looking in the future- So we, you know, are, are looking in the future to relook at this, to, um.
Look at it, update it.
Update it.
Update it.
And I think, I think Mike mentioned that.
As, as Ms. Barry, I, I want to let you know, Ms. Barry's come in, we visited twice, she's been very courteous, I know she's frustrated.
Yes.
And, and I understand that, and I wanna acknowledge that she is.
Absolutely.
Uh, but the, uh, just so you know, the agenda item that'll come before you in February, as I mentioned, will be an overarching review of the entire zoning code. Not just this item, but the entire zoning code, which contains setbacks, fencing, uh, you know, zoning of property, all that type of stuff. So it's gonna be a review of the entire, and that actually will be a discussion held by the council. But that will then be taken to the Planning and Zoning Committee and they will begin the work of revamping the planning and zoning. And have something prepared to you to bring back to the council for you for adoption. Now, I, I think you had questioned, you know, when's it gonna happen? Uh, normally, it, it is anywhere between a four to six to eight month process, depending on how the planning and zoning works. And how quickly they get to that, but it's gonna be a very arduous process for us to get to that point.
And there will be community involvement in that as well.
Yeah, there'll be community engagement, yes.
We, we do hear you and, and we understand, we all understand the frustration. We're not brushing it off, but we've, you've brought something to our attention that we have got to address. And it's the entire zoning ordinances, the way it's written, the way it's.
So this, this could be the four to six months process, so I'm gonna have to make other arrangements to find a place to put my RV.
As the RV ordinance is written right now.
Okay. Oh, are we done with this?
If you're through with your comments, yes ma'am, if you're through, we.
Yeah, okay.
You, you were very patient and wanted on the agenda, we'll listen to you all night if you wanna talk.
No, I think, I think I got what, what I need, I'll be here in February, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, item I on the agenda is discussion of civic center fees.
Very good, this, uh, agenda item, I had a conversation with Councilwoman Chavez about this. There, there has been, um, some conversation that's been held concerning the rental of the civic center. Uh, and these fees that we have, this is one of the conversations we had with the fee, the other one was the inability to pay for it with a credit card. You had, you had to pay cash or check, um, which I couldn't quite understand because of the fact that we take credit cards here for utility bill payments, but we weren't allowing it to be. Happy with the civic center, um, so that's been, that's been corrected, um, but there was now a conversation about. The, uh, civic center and the fees of that, and I think that Councilwoman Chavez had some, uh, items that she did wanna bring up about the rental of the civic center.
Okay, so I had got a lot of input from the community about the prices, um, that we are charging and. It, it's way beyond, you know, so the county has two buildings and I kinda compared the pricing and it, it, you know, it's, it's pretty reasonable. And, um, what we're charging, so if you look at it, we're charging a fourteen, like fifteen hundred?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, twelve hundred. And the reason, I know one of the reasons that we kinda went up there was because of the cleaning fee, we're outsourcing cleaning and we're not doing that anymore, we're doing that in-house. So I feel that we need to reconsider maybe not charging those fees, um.
Fifteen and you, if you get it the day before to decorate, the day after to clean, it does come out to fifteen hundred.
So I think maybe kinda reconsidering the prices, I know. I know myself that I didn't rent it, not that, well, if I'm not renting it because of the price, like I don't, how do I expect my citizens to do it?
So we rented it as well, it's pretty messy.
So, so this is what, um, the county's, their max is five hundred, like, to, to rent it out and then they get, you get some of that back. And that's for the, the largest room that they have is five hundred. And so I don't know if we want to compete with that, um.
So the largest room we have right now is one seventy-five, or?
That's the smallest, our entire facility.
Okay, you're right, gotcha.
It's five.
Five fifty.
Plus that three, plus the six fifty.
Well, six fifty's a deposit, it comes back. So it'd be eight, eight fifty, yeah.
Even that, yeah, even that, they have to come bu- come up with about what, fifty, yeah. Fourteen hundred, so I'd, I would just like to us to re, relook at that and see what y'all feel is reasonable. So we can have more people renting it out and not have to think twice about it.
Do we want to take away the cleaning fee?
I say the cleaning fee and lower your deposit.
Yeah.
Would be mine.
And, and tonight's discussion only, I'd be real, I know about reducing cleaning fee, but I'd be real careful about waiving a cleaning fee. You're no telling what you're gonna get when people leave if you're not charging them anything to clean it.
Yeah, so, so the person who cleans though, is the person who cleans City Hall also?
She's an employee, yes.
Okay, so if she goes out there and has a real huge crazy mess.
You use the deposit. You use the deposit.
You use the deposit, but we're missing her here where she should be cleaning. So it's taken away from us, you know?
I don't agree, I think that's where you get your deposit.
Now, I, I think that there needs to be a clarification that the deposit is only for potential damage to the building. Or to the furniture or to structures of that, it, it, the, the property, it says in here, uh, in addition to the revenue, the deposit will be due and payable to City of Kermit upon observing the room, blah, blah. To cover any damage done in said building, property, furniture, furnishings, and said amount will be refunded as it occurred. Uh, and, and that's, that's the reason for the deposit. Uh, now, the cleaning, of course, was the, the cleaning of the facility and.
Right.
I, I think that's correct, we don't know what that's gonna look like, but yes, that, that's, that's one area, she's an employee of the city.
Okay, let me add to that, um, so when you do rent from the county, they give you a checklist and it tells you this is what, what you have to do. And if you don't do it, you don't get your deposit back. So I think something similar to that, if they don't meet the criteria of cleaning the bathrooms, the main, the, you know, kitchen, if you don't do this, 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 what you automate, no, you're not gonna get that deposit back. So I think that's where we can make that for. The cleaning.
But you're saying leave the cleaning fees as, as are listed?
No, don't, leave them out.
Oh, leave them out.
And, and do your deposit.
Will you, will you wait things that are, let's see the checklist real quick, so.
And we can make our own, I mean.
Yeah, but say that, uh, um. I didn't pick up all the trash, uh, and get it to the dumpster, is that gonna be like weighted or am I gonna lose my whole six hundred dollar deposit because I didn't do that one item on the checklist? So just be, we'll be clear on that.
Right.
And I think item twelve in the agreement covers some of that, but we can, we can change it to, where it's basically just discussing damage. We can put on there something about the checklist and.
We don't meet the cleaning checklist.
Yeah, to, to the satisfaction of the city representative or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
And that could be exactly what you're talking about, we can change the requirements of the deposit to say damage too, but also, you know, the trash not being taken out of that type. So we can change this rental contract without, without a problem and, and in which it encompasses that, which if, if that's what we're doing, may, uh, again, remove the cleaning fee. And then, but if, if it's left, you know, in a, um, a very disorganized state. Then it could be that, that would be, um, a part of what we consider to be in the deposit or lots of other department deposit.
Right.
And I think that if we get to that point, then what we probably wanna do is have a representative from the city and a representative from the rental party. That we could meet out there and we can point out exactly what they failed to do, because if, if it's a matter of not throwing all the trash, then they may be able to remediate it. By getting two or three people there and say, okay, let me pick up all the trash to throw it, 'cause I'd rather spend thirty minutes throwing trash out than to lose three hundred dollars in the deposit.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think there's a possibility of to work with the, the rental party and, uh, remediate some of the issues that I think that we find, but if there's a wall broken in or, or knocked out, that would.
Right.
Any damage, yeah.
So I think we can work with them in that respect, yeah.
I, I just wanna see it, you know, rent it and, rent it more and people are like, hey, you know, we wanna rent it.
How many times has it been rented this year, can you tell us?
Uh, this year, I know that, um, we had this huge fandango party right after the first of the year that took place for an anniversary. Uh, and I think that we have a, we have a, a rental thing to play Saturday. Uh, I do know that, um, as a matter of fact, we, uh, I would have breakfast over at Kermit Home Diner and there was an oilfield company there having a safety meeting. Early in the morning, and I know that I've had a, a company talk to me about the fact that they wanted to be able to have their safety meetings. But we required a credit card and they couldn't get the credit card, so that's the reason I got rid of that, said, you know what, you can probably just pay for the check. Cause they were talking about having it, I think, every single week or every month, once a month, something like that, uh, so that we can actually have that. I think that the more we begin to start removing restrictions such as credit cards, you know, heavy deposit, uh, cleaning fees, those type of thing. I think it will cause the rental of the civic center to start increasing.
Sure.
Uh, it is capped on capacity, so if you have anything, anything over a hundred and twenty-five, then you will probably have to move it to the community center, uh, 'cause there is that. Uh, we do have the conference room as an example tonight, um, there is an ESL class that takes place. Uh, uh, working with the, uh, the library and also Odessa College, uh, that they use it, I believe, uh, three nights out of the week. For about an hour, hour and a half, and we don't charge them for that, we consider that to be a community partner. And so we let that happen, but they're aware that in the event that somebody wants to rent it on the night that they're there, they're gonna have to find another place to go because we're gonna rent it and collect revenue.
Sure.
So it's just an understanding that we have.
We do also have a clause in the rental agreement, I just happened to see, the city manager may authorize exceptions to the cleaning fee to best serve the overall needs of the city of Kermit. So there is some already, some leadway if Mike wasn't so hard on people.
I've got power.
So what do you think our prices should be, Karina?
I mean, the prices are good, just, um, just take out the cleaning fees, turn that, take out the cleaning fees.
So this is a discussion, I hate to sound like this, but this is a discussion item, so why don't we let Karina and Mike kinda spearhead and come up and then they can bring it before council, we can.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I really hate to sound like this. Thanks for addressing that. Okay, item eleven on the agenda, staff reports, uh, as always, in an effort to provide efficiency, we've kinda, uh, consolidated where we can look at the reports and if we have any questions or any comments. Thank y'all again.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
We can, uh, we can ask those folks any questions, so I'll give y'all a minute to kinda look through, uh, the department, uh, information. While they're looking at that, didn't, didn't we have an audit recently, do we know when?
We did, and just per, uh, uh, from the financial reports, uh, we just completed an audit, they came in, actually the week between Christmas and New Year's. They were here on the thirtieth and half day, thirty first, and came back in on January second, and they performed an annual audit.
Thank you, sir.
They performed the annual audit that we have, um, annually, if you remember last fiscal year, I might gonna say last year, last fiscal year. Our audit occurred about March and we didn't see it again till like June.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was through, uh, uh, Whitley Penn, and we changed auditing firms since then. Um, and with Bodinger, Seager, Gilbert and Moss, which is our new auditor, they came in in December and they're hoping to have a presentation of our audit. They said, they'll try to get it completed from February, so we're getting immediate audit, so that's, that's now been brought to us. Uh, one of the things that they did point out, which is one of the changes that you've seen immediately today, were the minutes of the, of these, uh, meeting, the meeting minutes. And the con- the condensation of that, so that was one of the things that they did point out, so you saw that happen immediately, but we'll have to be able to get something back from them in the, in the, in February, so. And I can tell you that, um, again, I've gotta give Leanne a lot of kudos, because of the work that she's done for almost a year now. Um, the, um, paperwork, procedures, everything that we had, that we had was in really good shape. And so a lot of it, they were able to find a lot of things, uh, you know, I think that Norma came in in like June, I believe, or July. So she got kinda thrown into it, uh, and working with Leanne, they have set up procedures now that, uh, were held from an internal audit or internal control perspective. And so that's been put in place, which is a big part of what the auditor looked for, uh, and so we've identified some of the things that we need to do, but. We really anticipate that there'll be very little coming back from management, uh, uh, action, management, uh, comments coming back to us because of what has been done by Leanne and also the finance team.
Great.
Hi, Ms. Chief of Police, I noticed that our overall calls are down since we are fully staffed. Do you think that is a correlation or is it just chance?
Chance.
I think burglaries and stuff like that are probably a direct correlation to having more vehicles out, more police vehicles.
Right, yeah, yeah, I, I see that they're down, so. When can we expect to get our police cars back?
We are waiting for the final part on our computers, they should have been in as of last week, so they're, they're moving this week, but we're still waiting on them.
Okay.
But I know the, the weather is, is playing heckle stuff, there's some friends of ours have their vehicle in Odessa, they have relaxed and.
You need day.
Yeah, so. Houston.
The parts are tied up and shipping because of the weather.
Wow. I was just saying that the vehicles are in Houston, where all that stuff took place, um, I think that's probably part of it. Uh, I'll also let you know that, um, uh, and Chief Department of State, I know about the School Resource Office and the Department of Defense, and, and, so you wanna, you wanna say what they. Well, we presented the officers to the school board or to the school admin staff on Tuesday, they did their interviews. And they really liked the selection that we had to offer them, so we were giving a thumbs up on three officers. Two that are currently on the streets and one that we just picked up from Odessa.
When, when do they anticipate them going to the campuses?
Starting the third of next month.
Oh. Oh, wow, great, so three, two weeks.
That's great.
And then we'll hire more to take their place?
Yes, matter of fact, we are in the process of doing a background, um, Mark Sanchez was here with us before.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so he's coming back to fill all the slots.
Oh, good. Good.
So that leaves us with one open slot, but we have two that are graduating from the police academy next month. So we'll have a selection for an officer to be placed on the streets.
Okay.
And they're both current, uh, city Kermit employees, correct?
Oh, good. So we had some employees that decided to go to the, well, that's great.
One of them in a water department and another was a dispatcher, correct?
Oh.
Okay. So if they, we, we have two employees that, did we pay for their academy?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, we did.
And there's only one spot, how does that work?
So what happens is we'll do a board, we'll interview whoever scores the highest, will be selected and placed in that open position.
Mm-hmm.
And the other one will carry their commission because they will be an officer in the future as things open up.
Okay.
So they'll keep their current job?
Correct, yes.
And then when?
And we'll carry their commission.
Right.
We'll carry the commission, they just won't be on the streets.
Okay.
So they'll either be continuing with the water or they'll continue with communications.
Until a spot opens.
Right, and that way we can just bring them in and turn over to work with the process again.
That's awesome.
And I just had one, one thing, um, I know that Tony is now kinda over the, so are we still getting accredited?
Yes.
Are we still working on that and?
So anything that we're going to do, it's not, part of the process of getting all of the vehicles in place and, of course, fixing our evidence room.
Okay.
Which is still in the process, but, uh, one of the problems we're having with that is trying to be able to drop the, uh. EOB.
Oh, the IT line that, remember?
Yes, bringing it over, 'cause that firewall, that brick wall goes all the way up. So it's gonna be difficult to try to run that line through there, so we had the electrician take a look at it and. Asked him to give me a bid to drop that line from where we currently have it now, which would be our evidence locker to the, uh, vault, what used to be the old jail. But it's. We ran into some logistical issues, yes, we'll try to work through it.
So it, when we move into the other building, then that, if we're certified here, do we have to get recertified over there?
That's a good question.
And I'm not sure, we'll double check that, but it's my understanding that once the police department becomes accredited.
Mm-hmm.
That's there, we just have to simply probably show them that the evidence room is now moved from here over there and over there will be an actual bank vault, so we should be fine there, but then we'll.
I mean, yeah, I think we ought to check on that because we should maybe place it on hold a bit till we get.
In, in the accreditation, yeah, the accreditation is a long process.
Cause you don't wanna have to do it twice.
Yeah, it's a two-year process.
The two-year process, so we're hoping by the time finally the accreditation will be over there.
Okay.
Yeah, but those are the things we have to have out of the way in order for us to start the process. Yeah, but those are the things we have to have out of the way in order for us to start the process, 'cause once you start the process, you're on a time schedule.
Right.
And you have to meet that.
So many days.
Right, okay, gotcha.
We don't wanna leap into it and then say, oh, it's gonna take me a year just to get that evidence locker up.
Right.
So and it's meeting the requirements of the um, for example, vehicles, technical gear, but also they have to have the procedures and policies in place.
Okay.
And so as example, when they that starts, they all that needs to be there in order for them to begin to start that accreditation process. So we're working and trying to get to the point that we can actually start. Uh, we'll let you know that uh we had a uh a very good conversation with the local Ford dealer. They came in and they gave us some uh bids, uh and some quotes on some vehicles for the SROs. Uh, and they've given us uh some pickups that we'll bring to you probably in our uh February sixth meeting. We have to have a February sixth meeting. In order to be able to do the uh the election call for the elections for the EDC, the EDD, and also for District one, two, and three. Uh, so we'll have a meeting on February sixth, and at that time, we'll probably bring to you the uh the the quotes for the vehicles that will be used for the the school resource officers at the campuses.
Well, thank you for that. I just wanted to bring you back to service, so we, you know, know kind of where at. Thank you.
Cheryl, you had a good December?
Very.
Mm-hmm. I was trying to think in my head how many warrants you cleared in a year, and I've lost count. My numbers don't go that high. Very good job.
I can tell you how many I've cleared out since I've been here.
Lay it on me.
Well, let's hear.
Eight thousand eight hundred and.
Yeah.
Eight eighty-eight, what?
Eight thousand eight hundred and forty-two.
And what was our number earlier? A mil- million dollars, two million dollars?
Uh, it was one billion ninety-four thousand fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah.
And we found money that was back in the um MBVA that they were sitting on until they got fully paid. Which was charging us to sit and hold our money, so I met with the guy. And I told him that money should have already been sent, that's our money, you know, and if they drew gifters on it, we should, it was like he gave us all money.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Great.
Neil.
We'll take it.
Well, now they're sending it number.
Yes, as it should be.
Well, it's automatic conviction. If they pay a payment to MBV, that's an automatic fee. So that helps me in turn, if they don't finish paying the rest, then I issue an FBA, so it is.
Manuel, any water leaks?
Yes, we had uh two. We had one with a seven forty-five, seven U A, and then we had the one at the cemetery, it was a, it was a four inch. We only had two leaks. Uh, I went and got one that had nothing reported, we had uh doing a full spell, you know, they're they're not in there. But uh and we also had a whole bunch of surcal, and uh of course, this uh next uh next meal, I've had a whole bunch of them, because you know, there was a, the leaks and the surcal's happening.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Other than that, uh everything looks great, and uh we have no poats at all.
The four inch leak at the cemetery, was that just cold or somewhat brittle?
Well, we uh, I guess we got uh, we uh, it was a cold, I get the the ground shifting and uh just oh, it was a combination of cold.
Okay.
So we uh, we helped the cemetery, of course, you know, it's a water, so we helped, or weed basically.
Okay.
I like that.
We're paying for the material, probably did the work.
Teamwork makes the dream.
Wonderful, people work, that's exactly what we like to hear.
Makes the dream.
Um, is our fence finished?
The water fence is finished, and I believe that they've um just about completed the recycle.
Hmm, okay.
So if you have a chance, will I take a look?
It's good.
I haven't been by there, within a couple of weeks.
Okay, uh, moving on to item twelve, uh any public comments on anything that was not on the agenda tonight? Moving on, uh, item thirteen, any items from council, council city manager, any comments from ACM uh that y'all would like to make? Hug?
Uh, I wanna thank y'all for fixing the the new valves out of the cemetery. Though some of them been leaking for quite a while, and uh anyway, but they they've got them in 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 in, and so we don't have a puddle there all the time. But um, and then there was one other thing, some of the panels in the fence around the cemetery. I I don't know if the 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 screws or whatever that those were installed with originally have broken. Um, right by the gates that say Kermit, I know one of the panels is leaning in. It's not the cement, it's the metal. And then one, as you come in, the gates off underwood to the left, that panel is leaning in, and it looks like the one next to it, or maybe the next one down, is maybe giving, fixing to give way. I didn't know if they could check those and maybe get those.
Yes.
Uh, it's, I, it, that's a, I think, uh, an easy, I think it's pretty easy fix. I think the the bolts have probably just worked their way out.
Yeah.
And um, then um, somebody had asked me, um, what what does it take to sort of establish neighborhood watch? Somebody's in our neighborhood knocking on the doors at like ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night, and none of us have cameras or anything. But they knocked on my neighbor's last week, they knocked on ours the other night. I don't know if it's kids or what, and I thought, well, I didn't know if we might be able to kinda put that and see if it's something we might be able to organize and um see what we might be able to come up with. I know my neighbor is is, she's single. And my wife is at home at night by herself now. I stay out at my mother's. So I I and they were saying something had happened in Odessa, and they caught the void because of the neighborhood watching, people having their cam- having cameras on their house. They were working together.
I could look into the program.
And I didn't know if it's something we could just look into and see if we might get, you know, some some interest in it. And um, then there was um, could, are we still gonna schedule a walkthrough for the the bank building?
That was actually one of the items I was gonna mention during my time, but yes.
Oh, okay, that's good. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
I just wanna say I learned a lot at my TML conference last week, and I am looking forward to the mid-year conference. I am so proud of the teamwork I'm seeing of the guys doing, taking down decorations, and everybody's helping one another. I think we're off to a good start to the year, and I, have there been any major leaks, city breaks?
No, ma'am, only uh, ten dot only one, two weeks, and uh service lines.
I mean. That's a great, that's great news, so.
Ms. Green?
Well, in front of you, you have your Kermit celebration days. Um, we surveyed, and I'm very glad, Mike, if you haven't looked online, put it out there to kinda get feedback of our KCD. Um, it's about that time. I would like to maybe set up something in February if y'all are ready. I think we're kinda behind in the game this this year, but.
Yeah, we need to get started.
I would like to meet in Fe- uh February, and so having this input kinda helps us steer us uh the direction we need to go for for this year.
Okay.
So if y'all have, did did everybody get a copy of the survey?
We we put it out on the website, and we put it out Facebook, and then they would send it out to the uh vendors.
Yeah, and we had some good feedback.
Yeah.
We had good feedback.
Very good feedback, so I'm.
And it a lot, and it was positive.
Yes.
It was positive.
And I just want the input, we want input, I, you know, let them know that we are, you know, we are listening, so. Spread the word that the survey's on online.
Are we looking at a February meeting for that?
Yes.
Do we know?
That was, yeah, that was gonna be a part of what we discussed on February.
Okay, perfect. Ms. Judy?
Um, I really don't have anything.
All right, moving on.
Nothing that's not already been said, so.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, Mayor Council, along with that, uh, we are planning a February sixth meeting uh for the council to be a special meeting. Uh, we do have to call for the elections, as I mentioned earlier, uh District one, two, and three. And then also uh a call for the election for the economic development uh corporation, and also the municipal development district. So we have to call for those elections on February sixth is the date that Diana had identified. She's not here today, 'cause she's actually at election school this week to make sure she's got everything done. Uh, but also with that meeting, we were looking at uh scheduling the meeting to also have a tour of the bank. And so we'll probably start a conversation I've had with the mayor, we'll start the meeting at the Citibank building, uh maybe about five or so, in order to be able to get back over here before it got dark and I have to worry about being over there. Uh, and then we'll have our special meeting that we have, we'll have a couple of items on there. Uh, but immediately following, we're talking about having a uh KCD twenty twenty-five meeting, where we hopefully we may get a few more responses. I think what this is probably fizzled out. And then maybe pretty much all we're gonna get, which is still valuable information, but then at that point in time, uh we need to start having discussions about bans that uh we need to reach out to, try to get some pricing. And then maybe once we do that, have a me- immediate meeting, probably first part of March again, to solidify the bans, so we can go ahead and get them booked for uh September. And then uh and and get started on that, and try to figure out where we're gonna go from there, yeah. It is time for KCD to get started. Um, the mid-year conference, as mentioned by a couple of folks, is gonna be on March the twentieth and twenty-first in Austin. And there's also a TML legislative day, which will be held on the day before, on the nineteenth. So if anybody's interested in attending that, uh March twenty twenty-one is the mid-year conference, and if you're interested in the legislative day, that'll be on March nineteenth, the day before. Uh, just let Diana know, we'll make sure we get you uh registered and set up to go to that mid-year conference, and that's all I have, I'm like.
So you you're gonna have to reschedule the um regular city council meeting, 'cause it would fall on March twentieth.
The um. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
C- if those who, the, if if the council goes to the concerts, I'm not gonna be able to go to that one.
Right. Well, and luckily, we changed our ordinance where we can actually uh have it scheduled, so the mayor will be able to set the time on that schedule. So that's not a, that's one thing that we can.
Three thirty in the morning. Maybe not the time, but the date.
Not so incite, not so incite.
I prefer the date.
ACM, almost, you got anything? Every year we miss out, and last year, Ms. Cheryl, we had a conflict. Let's get National Night out on the, let's get that rolling so that we can concentrate everybody together. Cause every year I wanted to do it, and darn it, it's too late, and last year you had something going, and somebody else had something going on, so let's get that one going, 'cause I I really wanna do that this year.
I really believe that we'll have a lot of community participation.
Well, I'm gonna buy all of the PMTs, the PDSO, DPS, ambulance, you know, I'm, I want to bring them all together and then try to get them to set up, you know, they can do the blood pressure thing, you know, all that.
Yep.
Yep, yeah.
But I was trying to do it where, 'cause you know, when you, do it where your kids can go play at the park, it gives the kids something new, so the parents can kind of, you know.
Right.
Be relaxed a little bit, let the kids.
Maybe we can coordinate a movie in the park, something, that's.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I don't remember what the conflict was last year, but you you were at one spot, somebody else was at another, but if you don't mind, I really would like to get that on.
Do we still have that theme from the movies, or did, when it would happen?
They they they, when they broke into the chamber, they stole the box, the the video, the 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 ca- the.
Projector.
The pro- the projector, thank you, but they didn't get the screen. Now, I don't know where it is now. You might call Camille Selber and ask her where that screen, 'cause it was a huge screen. And they did not get it.
Yeah.
I know how to set it up.
I think we have some money set aside, and there's also, I think, we exchanged information on a company in Andrews that comes over with it on a trailer, and all that's all set up, they put the movie on, so.
Yep.
If you don't mind, I'd love to make sure we get that coordinated issue.
I was, I've been trying to do it.
I know. I know, but we get, now is January, so maybe, 'cause it's in August, I believe, right?
Probably in, uh, yeah, we can do it, we can do it anytime. I mean, there's a specific set day, but we've done, there's in June or July.
Okay.
So we can do them during the mon- summer months.
If we do it when it's hot, we can do like an ice cream, like the, I've talked about it at best part, ice cream social and popcorn, and the kids can do movies and.
And while if we had a splash.
Go play on the hur- playground, you heard.
If we had a splash park.
We won't have it that quick. I'll spray, I'll put a sprinkler out there.
Do you think it'll be built by then?
No.
Um, we might check with the chamber, and if they don't have any, 'cause they're gonna have to buy a projector, we we might obtain that screen, and then we could buy a projector and have it.
Didn't you just say somebody had one for to rent?
There's one in A- a company in Andrews that come over on a trailer. I took a picture of their Facebook or something one time, but.
I know, we spent about six thousand.
They provide the movie, they, you know, give you a list to choose from or whatever, so.
But, I mean, we're not working, if we could obtain the screen, if we can get a projector to go with it and keep it.
So in so in keeping with with Rodney's comment on neighborhood watch, actually today, Chief and I and Mike talked about developing, Navi Nezal probably be the chief in that, uh, put her in the crown big.
Or some citizens you don't wanna be on the road.
Well, this is probably gonna happen.
Yeah.
Serious.
Yeah.
And and Mike has a another, Mike has another program that he's looking at trying to put into place, and and we'll need to make sure we score, it's called City Hall one-on-one.
City Hall one-on-one.
And it basically is signing up a group, kinda like the Fire Academy in Odessa or wherever, sign a group of citizens, take them to the water department, take them to City Hall, take them and teach them each part of city government, so that it helps get the word out, and it, people understand a little bit more education, so he's working on that, so y'all look for that to be coming soon as well.
And they will become ambassadors for the city.
I got, I've got a question. You you mentioned you about the um, you're doing the safety meetings out there, and you're not charging them?
No, no, no.
Are you gonna charge them?
No, it it was that we had to have, they had to put down a credit card, and they would have the credit card put down, so we changed that to like.
No, they they didn't, couldn't pay with a check.
Couldn't pay with a check.
Check. They couldn't pay with a check, and they they wanted, they have credit card.
But they had credit.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
So, so my thing I was gonna ask, I have an individual that's, 'cause we do not have DWI classes and drug classes over here, and there's a lot of people that cannot travel out of town. If we could get someone to do the counseling in Kermit. What kind of deal would you cut them using the civic center, maybe once a month?
Yeah, I think that's something we can do. That'd be a part of what we can discuss, if we wanna look at the potential for nonprofit government agencies to have a special pricing, then we can do that as well.
Sure.
Good, good point.
Yeah, if it's nonprofit, I think y'all can address that.
Cause we really need it.
Oh, yes.
It's so hard for adults to go out, but we also need it for the children as well, that's separate.
Yeah.
Good point.
Uh, and once again echo Rodney's in uh in the prayer earlier, please keep the shulers and and all of wink in our prayers, 'cause it's it's a pretty rough time, so that's all we're.
We do know that his, the grandfather's in the hospital, he crooked his.
He has a broken hip.
Jeff, oh, I didn't know.
Jeff, never moved Jake's motorcycle, but it fell on him.
Moved Jake's motorcycle, followed, followed his hip. He had a pin and a rod stuck in his, yeah, he's staying in the hospital.
And and Greg's not here tonight, but I think he had a doctor's appointment, so we should see him hopefully in in the next council meeting. Anybody got anything else?
Can we unlock the bathroom door to the women's toilet?
No, no, you have to use the man's.
I've tried.
That's, yeah, that's why you were asking if there was a problem.
Yeah, so I didn't know you were in there and trying to get in.
I know who you said, lad.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
You lock the door to keep the kids out.
Well, motion and second, adjourn, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at nine twenty-four PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, y'all. Everybody have a good night, safe night.
All right.
Uh, turning mics off, everybody? Especially before I tell Mike anything.
There's just a lot.
Normie, hit your mic.
You have Ms. Marion's number.
Uh, I believe I did mention.